All right, well, good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Lindsay is helping us out this evening, so if you want to go ahead and do roll call for us, please.
Mr. Chavez.
Here.
Ms. Evanson.
Here.
Ms. Heights.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Lima.
Here.
All right, we do have a couple of changes we need to make to the agenda this evening. We need to remove Policy JH. We're not quite ready for a second reading and adoption for that one. And then we would like to move the charters to the last two items, if you guys are good with that, because we can vote on all the other ones rather quickly, if you guys are okay with that. So do I have a motion? And then we'll just bump everything else up one. So do I have a motion to amend the agenda for this evening and accept it?
Motion to amend the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we'll go ahead and take the vote, seeing.
Mr. Chavez.
Yes.
Ms. Evanson.
Yes.
Ms. Heights.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Lima.
Yes.
Okay, so first on the agenda, we have Policy IHBA. Do I have a motion to approve Policy IHBA?
Motion to approve Policy IHBA.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Those were some minor red line corrections in state. Basically, things from the state that we have to put into our policies, so. Okay, seeing no discussion, we can take the vote.
Mr. Chavez.
Approved.
Ms. Evanson.
Yes.
Mrs. Heights.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Lima.
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve Policy JEA?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, basically, the same, same thing, so.
Mr. Chavez.
Approved.
Ms. Evanson.
Yes.
Mrs. Heights.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Lima.
Yes.
All right, next up, as you remember last week, Dan gave us an update on or the contract approval for our networking, so do I have a motion for the LAN WAN contract approval?
Motion to approve LAN WAN contract.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the contract? I think this is great, that it'll be obviously longer and more consistent, and whatever the loop thing means, that we won't get disrupted. I think that sounds good. So I don't think anybody likes it when their internet is disrupted. I know my kids don't, so I think that sounds great, so. All right, seeing no further discussion, we can move for the approval or vote, excuse me.
Mr. Chavez.
Approved.
Ms. Evanson.
Yes.
Mrs. Heights.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Lima.
Yes.
All right. All right, and then next up, we have a resolution to delegate the election official, so we do have an election this November, so Amy Navaret will be the district's delegate, our election official for this fall for the school board election. Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution to designate our election official?
Motion to.
Motion to approve. Second.
All right, will motion, Dr. Evanson, second. Right, any discussion? Seeing none, we can take the vote. Oh, go ahead, Barb.
I would like to say that I had absolutely no idea what in, what went into this process until I filed my affidavit to run for school board, and the amount of effort that Ms. Navaret puts into this is absolutely awesome. I appreciate her so very much. She is an asset that without we would be, we would be in not a great place. So thank you so very much for all that you do, Ms. Amy, like you are amazing, and we appreciate you so very much.
Absolutely, well said.
Yes, well said. Director Evanson, thank you so much for that, yes. It sounds very simple on paper, and a lot of work obviously goes into it behind the scenes. Thank you for that. All right, we'll go ahead and take the vote for the election official.
Mr. Chavez. Mrs. Evanson.
Yes.
Mrs. Heights.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Lima.
Yes.
All right, next up, we have the resolution to approve our new strategic plan. Thanks, everyone, for just tabling it to this week. I know it's been, we've had a lot on our plate this last month, so do I have a motion to approve a resolution for our new five-year strategic plan?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? I'm pretty excited. I think it's a great plan. I, I think the plan really gives us a lot of guidance in moving forward. I was at the Casby quarterly meeting this last week, and it's amazing how many districts actually don't have a strategic plan, and they seem a little rudderless in their vision and their mission, and I honestly don't know how you know where you're going as a district if you don't have a strategic plan, so I'm very thankful that, for the time and effort that, for our community and for CSI, for C, no.
CE.
Thank you. I'm like, what acronym am I looking for? Thank you, Dr. Hill, for them working with us, so.
Andrea, I'd like to just throw in also, just an extra special thanks to all the community members that, that were there for all of the, all or most of those committee meetings. They worked really hard on this, went back out into the community to, to gather information and brought back to the community. It was really a great community effort.
Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the resolution for the new strategic plan?
We already did that.
Oh, sorry, that was discussion. All right, we can take the vote.
Moving on.
Mr. Chavez.
Approved.
Mrs. Evanson.
Yes.
Mrs. Heights.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Lima.
Yes.
I just want to say thanks to the board for approving that real quick. Sorry, for the public, I got pneumonia, so I'm going to, that's why my camera's off, so you don't have to see me hawking stuff up. So, but I do appreciate the board approving this, and you know, the thing about three years ago, we approved it 5-0, and all the progress we've made as a district, and I'm really proud of the work of our team and this board, and holding ourselves accountable to goals and targets that we've set, and to reiterate what was said earlier, I appreciate the steering committee, I appreciate Colorado Education Initiative for coming in and partnering with us, and they'll continue to work with us, and Jen and, and her team, and really all of our senior leadership members who have contributed to this. It's just, as President Height said, it's really important that we have a North Star for our district, or else we can get sidetracked on a lot of different things, and so I'm excited for the next five years, and I think, you know, we're going to change the trajectory of our county and our community through the work we're going to do through this plan, so thanks to everybody who contributed, and thanks to the board for approving this. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Hill, that was well said. All right, then, next up, we have our licensed and administrative personnel actions, so do I have a resolution to approve those? Or a motion, excuse me, we don't need a resolution. Ooh, I am ready for summer break, can you tell?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, seeing no discussion, we can go ahead and take the vote.
Mr. Chavez.
Approved.
Mrs. Evanson.
Yes.
Mrs. Heights.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Lima.
Yes.
All right, so then, next up, we have Somerset Academy Scenic View Charter School Resolution. All right, so we, do we have the motion for Somerset? Dr. Hill, was there anything that we needed to hear from the district?
Yeah, I, I'll just say, well, one, you know, I do appreciate the folks who applied to want to be a part of the district and, and want to, you know, open up more options in the district, so I do appreciate the individuals and the organizations that applied. I also want to thank the, the team that worked on this, Jen in particular, who spearheaded, there's a lot of work that goes into the application process and the review and everything for when you have charters, so thanks to Jen and her team and everybody who worked on that, to the DAC as well, who reviewed it, and the hours and hours and days that have gone into this, and then also just thanks to the board for your leadership as well. So you have, you have two resolutions tonight for each of the, the two individual charters that applied, and so based on the scoring in the rubric and the results from that process, the recommendation for both, and the resolutions state that, is to deny both of them at this time, and the resolution mentions the reasons why. Obviously, there's a lot of data behind all that as well, but that is the, the recommendation for both of the applicants tonight is a denial, and so you have resolutions for both of those this evening, so again, I know that's probably disappointing for some, but I do want to say we appreciate everybody who went through this process, and, and so I'll leave it to the board with that.
All right, board, we can have the motion second and then discussion, so.
Second.
Oh, sorry, well.
So I make a motion to accept the resolution to deny Somerset Academy Scenic View.
And I'm seconding the resolution.
Yes.
Okay, now, do we have discussion?
So there is something that I want to bring forward. I worked in the district as a security officer for several years, and I'm going to bring this forward now, and I've held this for a very long time. I know that we had a highway patrolman that came forward, and I believe that his child attended Scenic at the time, and he had quite a few things that he wanted to say. I served six years as a SWAT officer. I served 16 years as a law enforcement officer, and 10 years of that was spent as an investigator for the police department in Jacksonville, North Carolina, and then I spent two years as a security officer in the district. Now I'm going to tell you that the second that I set foot in Scenic, and mind you, I want to put this forward right now, that none of this came forward as any kind of a deciding factor for the closing, closing of Scenic at any point. This is something that I have intentionally held on to until this exact moment, not because I felt like Scenic View was going to come forward as a charter, but after knowing that they were seen as the end-all-be-all facility, the moment that I set foot in there as a security officer, I felt the dread. I saw where those children were hidden in that room. I knew that there was an opportunity for the smallest of caliber of weapon to penetrate those walls. I knew where they were. I could hear them giggling, and there was no way that I could have signed on to that building continuing to be enforced. However, yet again, I want to make it a point that at no point have I ever made this known during any process. I kept this to myself because I wanted this to be an unbiased process, and I just, I can't, just knowing dead set that Somerset Scenic View is so set on having that building back, and that we closed it for a purpose. We closed it for a reason. We closed it because not even what I'm talking about, but structurally, that building has so many issues, and it's a financial issue for our district, but to add on to what I'm saying, and that it's a strategic issue, it's literally, I don't even know if I want to say this, but I guess I'm going to, it is an active shooter's dream. You get one door, you get all doors, and there's so much that needs to go into this building in order to make it a safe environment for students, not only students of District 51, but any charter school or anything else that might go into that that has children in it. And so while this is something that I haven't said in the past, this is something that I'm saying now, and the fact that this was the dead set, all be ended building that Somerset Scenic View was set on, that, that was a huge wrench in my gears. There were a couple other things that I had issues with, but I'm going to leave, I'm going to leave some open space for the rest of you to talk, but that, that was a huge problem for me. Thank you, guys, for giving me an opportunity to say that.
I think for, for myself, it doesn't, the denial doesn't dictate what those teachers do there. We have some amazing teachers at Scenic, and they do a lot of stuff for our students. They have some amazing kids there. I have kids that play softball right now that went to Scenic and come and talk to me, but I just think that, in my opinion, you know, it, I feel like it, it was rushed a little bit, and I know we want to keep that school intact. I know we want to do things to make that thing, to make the school better, but the whole situation was just, it seems like it was, we pushed things in there, we pushed it through. We want to keep, you know, you guys came to us time, meeting after meeting, you want to keep Scenic whole, keep our group together, keep our family together, and, and I get that, but I just think that we need to have some more planning behind it, and that's, that's the main thing for me, is it just, it just seems rushed. It just seemed like it's not the time to do it. But like I said, it doesn't dictate the people that you are, because there are some very caring and wonderful people at Scenic, and so I'm, I'm interested to see what happens in the future, but I'm just, you know, for me, that was a lot of reason for me.
I guess, when I looked at it, I didn't look at it at Scenic, I looked at it completely separate as a charter school, applying to be part of the district, and that's how I looked at it, so I totally removed myself and everything about Scenic, and, and just looked at it purely as a charter school and what it was providing, and reading it, and I just felt that there was some parts that were not there, and I think when I looked at the work that Jen and her team put in there, it, it shows that, so that's where, that is where I stood.
Director Lima, do you have any comments?
For me, it was probably the, the financial piece of it that stood out the most from the, the budget that was presented was just very off with the amount of students that it, that it appeared there would realistically be, and, and no alternate budget even that would, that would provide for significantly less students than the number that was in that, that that budget was built around, so for me, the budget was just not there, and there were too many undefined pieces, such as the location and what that was going to cost. There were several of those things, and so for me, that was probably what stood out for me the most.
Director Evanson, if you, if you have more, go ahead and say what you need to say.
So I have a couple friends through the community that actually work at other charter schools within the district, and I'll agree with Director Lima that one of the things that I struggled with during this process was the budgetary line items, so i.e., one of the things was that they looked at what our starting teachers were making, and I have a friend that works at a district charter school, and she's been there since I've known her. So we moved here in 2020, so that's roughly five years, and she's not making the starting salary in which one of our starting teachers is making. Steps and lanes aren't guaranteed. If their school doesn't have the budget, they don't have the budget, and I guess that kind of also goes back to some of the guarantees or some of the things that we, as a board, have made a distinct effort in order to maintain our steps and lanes, and if the money's not there, she said to me today, if the money's not there, then we don't get it. You can't guarantee something that you don't have, and so looking at the budgetary line items that Somerset Scenic View had set forth, it was, in accordance with our current charter schools that are open, unrealistic. We have teachers that have been there for upwards of five years at some of our other schools that, I mean, and that's up to their board, you know, I mean, they maintain their own budget, but the logic that we were going to start teachers off at $50,000 a year, which we have worked so hard as a board to get to, which you, I mean, I say me, but really, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just kind of falling in behind you and Director Lima and Director Jones, like, I've, I've, I've been a part of that this year and partially of it last year, but in the years previous to that, like, that was a decision that you guys made, like, something that you worked hard on, and that's not necessarily happening in, in our other schools, or, or, I shouldn't say schools, I mean, in our other charter affiliates, and so to think that we were just going to be like, yep, that's what you guys are paying them, and that's what we're going to pay them, that wasn't, that wasn't a logical budget, and so after looking at that and having some, some conversations just to figure out, like, what was being paid to some of our other charter schools, and without even letting it be known that that was what I was trying to figure out, you know, because you, you just have to be very cautious about what you're saying, and I'm just like, hey, just curious, what are you, what are you getting, and so realizing what a teacher at some of our other charters are getting, like, it just wasn't a logical budget. It was just out of, out of the realms of norm or logic or reason, I suppose, and so thinking that there may be steps or lanes even available for them later was a struggle for me, and then just to realize that, and like I said, you know, Scenic, Scenic Elementary was kind of the end-all-be-all building, and I suppose that I just expect that there would have been some kind of side facility, or at least conversations to have been had for another facility that may have been a potential prospect for, for Scenic View, had the, the Scenic Elementary Building not went the way that they wanted it to, and just to hear that there was no other conversation of another facility was kind of disheartening, I guess would be the best to say, because there are other buildings within our community that would be a great fit for a Somerset Scenic View. So I guess that was an issue for me, that it was just kind of all laid down on one building, and this is kind of like our, I guess I'm not sure what the right word is, like, this is, this is us, like, this is what makes us, like, the way that this building is, is what's going to be perfect for us, and so I guess I would have just liked to have seen alternative plans, or, you know, I mean, a secondary or a third plan, if, if, if anything, so there were quite a few things, and then I, I would like to say, however, that, you know, I took a significant amount of time to review this data and a lot of the interviews and the information that was set forth, and I want to give, and just a shout out to Somerset Scenic View, that so many people came in, and they were present, and they were there, and they were tangible, and they were physically in front of the, the, the board that sat in front of them, like, I appreciate that so much, because above all things, being present and being tangible and being physically there is an amazing thing, and that is by far one of the greatest things that I saw, like, thank you for being there and being available to answer the questions, and being available, you know, to just, I mean, and it's even harder sometimes, I think, when you're in person, because it's like that face-to-face interaction, and I, I guess the way I've always put it is you don't get to be a keyboard warrior, or you don't get to be, like, separated from the environment, so thank you all for being there for, for that, like, that was, that was a great display of, of showmanship when it came down to the interview process, but I think there needs to be a lot more thought process put into the facility. There needs to be a lot more thought process, process put into the budget, not just per people funding, but, you know, like, understanding the totality of the budget, maybe some meetings to be had with the district in the future, but I don't want to discourage you guys from not being a charter. I think that it was something that was, like, very pushed, as Director Jones said, like, it was something like, we want this, we need this, it's important to us, but I think that there were a lot of gaps that could have been filled, given the time, and if you had more time, I think that you could have made it way more solid than what it was this go around, so I think you guys did a good job, given the timeframe, but I think that it could have been way more substantial if you had some time to fill in those gaps.
Thank you, Director Evanson. Anybody else have anything else?
All right, I, I just kind of had to put, put my thoughts together. I had spent some time, obviously, watching the interviews, reviewed the emails from the community, and also went through the entire rubric, looking at, you know, the strengths and weaknesses, you know, I know, I believe we all did that, so, you know, so with Somerset Academy Scenic View, there were definitely some encouraging signs. Their team did show up in person for the capacity interview, so thank you for that. We also saw community members attend the public meetings. Those things certainly matter, so thank you, guys, for that. The willingness to engage is always appreciated and speaks to a level of commitment, so those things really, like Director Evanson said, those things really do make a difference when you're trying to present your case or present what you're wanting to bring into the district. Obviously, some of the things that were stated tonight were some concerns. When it comes to charter, obviously, having been on a charter board, the two biggest things where charters fail are finances and leadership, and when the district is putting their seal of approval on a charter, we're, what we're basically doing is saying that we're, you know, one, we're approving you, and that we're partnering with you in this, and that we, and that we're giving you our blessing, and so in, in that, there were some concerns I had. I did not see a level of preparedness that gives me the confidence in, in your ability quite yet to open and operate a school successfully. As Director Evanson said, there was no secured facility. It seemed like that kind of changed a lot. The financial plan and the inconsistencies that lacked contingency measures were concerning, because there was some talk about getting grants afterwards, which I, I understand that that's kind of how that works, but also the lending from the management organization. There was just kind of a, a lot of that, I think, that still needs to get worked out, and the academic program really remained unclear to me, particularly around curriculum alignment and some assessment strategies, and unfortunately, the capacity interview did not resolve these concerns for me. Beyond the operational gaps, what kept coming back to me, and I just, I kept looking for this, is the unique value of Somerset. The, the biggest thing for charters is what, what are they offering that we already don't have in D-51? It has to be a niche, and I really, I mean, I just kept looking and looking and looking, and I could not find a clear answer. The instructional model that, you know, that they were, were, excuse me, were proposing honestly closely mirrored what we already have in many of our district schools. It didn't bring any distinct innovation or me, any specific unmet need that I could see in our community that we aren't already doing. You may not agree with me with that, but I just honestly could not see where it was really meeting something that we aren't already doing in our district schools, and so, you know, without that, I don't believe that we were expanding an option, I just felt like we were duplicating an effort with that, so for me, that's, I just didn't see that there was enough of a uniqueness or a niche with that charter, and so those were just some of the hangups for me with the, with the Somerset Academy, so those were just some of the thoughts that I had to kind of put together for myself.
All right, so the motion on the table, just to remind the board, is to adopt the resolution, you know, for now, at this point, to deny the Somerset Scenic View charter, so we had the motion and the second, so we'll go ahead and take the vote.
Mr. Chavez.
Yes.
Mrs. Evanson.
Yes.
Mrs. Heights.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Lima.
Yes.
Um, next up. Dr. Hill, did you, you, you said both, right, when you were talking?
Yeah, I, I figured y'all were taking them one by one, but yes, same, same as I said before, appreciate folks applying and everyone who went through this process. This is also one that's a recommendation for denial, so you have that in front of you this evening.
All right. Do I have a motion for the Gateway for Success Resolution?
Motion to accept a resolution, resolution to deny the, uh, gateway to success for...
Second.
Okay, board, any discussion on Gateway for Success?
So I mentioned with Somerset Scenic View that I significantly appreciated them all being in person, and, um, I viewed the documents and the interviews at length. I think that something that just my personal, my personal perspective is that I would have appreciated someone being in the room. Um, we also had an opportunity beforehand, um, for anyone that was an advocate of this program to come forward, and no one was present. Secondly, there were no letters of intent, so, uh, or at least not a significant amount of letters of intent. And so for me to see a school, I mean, and I, I know that we've already talked about Scenic View, but Scenic View at least provided some letters of intent. I didn't see any significant letters of intent to justify the, uh, attendance for this particular charter school. Something that would have, I, I don't know, like, when I was running for school board, you know, I knew how many signatures I needed to have. And so my goal was to have 150% of those signatures. And so if your, if your attendance level is to be, you know, 300 students, then I would expect way in excess of 300 letters of intent, and that was just not something that we had here. And so to see that there was just not a, a community uprising or necessity for this, for this charter school was something that kind of persuaded my decision, um, in this process. To also, um, not have anyone physically show up for the, the interviews, um, was also something that I, I looked at. Um, also some of the budgetary things, you know, there were conversations during this about Title II, Title III, Title IV. So just conversations that were had during the interview process that just led me to believe that it was not wholeheartedly thought through. That has been something that has, has played a, uh, has played in my decision-making process for this.
Thank you. Any other discussion, board? Director Lima, do you have anything?
You just called me Dr. Lima, and I really appreciate that.
Oh.
I'm kidding.
Doctor, doctor, I'll just call everybody doctor.
I would, I, I, I think Director Evanson, um, hit on many of the things that, that I found issue with, with this, uh, application as well.
Director Chavez, Director Jones?
So I also had an issue with, uh, facilities, um, which may be something that you come up with, uh, President Heitz, because with your real estate background. I suppose that something that I expected was, these are our perspective locations, um, and, and kind of definitive locations, um, not well, maybe, or if, or tentatively, or anything like that. I mean, even if it was just reaching out to, you know, a commercial realtor and saying, hey, what areas are available? What, what could we potentially be looking at? So again, location, 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 that was an issue for me also. I, I, I want to know where our kids are going to be at, you know, I want to know that they're in an environment that's safe. I mean, security was something that has been a, a concern for me from the beginning and will always be a concern for me. And so to, so to not know where, um, students will potentially be, and if the environment is safe, and if the, the building is safe, and if, you know, all of these things are intact that we would require as a district in any of our facilities, um, are intact are a bit of an issue for me. So I think that, um, going forward, it would be important for them to know that they need to have, um, a little bit more of a definitive ideology of where they're going to place their facilities at. And having that before the closure date. And not, and I probably should have brought this up previously, but it's also important that, that if there's any ancillary data that you want us to have about your process, it's important that you give us to it, give it to us before the closure date, which I believe was June 9th in this process. So, you know, don't wait until like you see the agenda items to then send us like, let's clear this up. Which wasn't necessarily this, uh, this charter school, but just as a, as a bigger picture, if there's something that you feel like needs to be cleared up, clear it up before the closure date of the process. Don't wait until, don't be reactive, be proactive.
Thank you, Director Evanson. All right, yeah, so I, again, on this one, um, just had to collect my thoughts again, just went through the interviews, went through the rubric. You know, we've, some of us have gone through this before, again, um, before, just looking again through the rubric and, uh, weighing through these things again. You know, I'm always, um, I always get excited when we see these applications that we're hopeful that this will bring something new and meaningful to, um, the district. And, um, and again, I just did not see, um, preparedness in key areas, um, for this charter as well. Like Director Evanson said, um, no facility was even indicated. It's not hard to just even give a general idea, um, even if it's not necessarily the one that you'll pick at that time, um, just even, uh, going and finding, um, some different facilities to give the board and the community an idea of, um, some different areas that might work. You know, just a lack of any kind of idea was, um, a little disappointing. There was no clear plan for special education or English language learner students, there was vague academic benchmarks. Um, the financial model was, um, concerning and a little confusing, and then just some major unanswered questions that I just feel they need more time to work on. So there were certainly still some ideas with promise, but the execution plan, um, just felt incomplete. So again, if we're giving our blessing and our stamp of approval on this, we need to make sure that everything, like every I and every T is crossed. So, um, every I is dotted, every T is crossed, so. But I'm going to say that what really stood out to me the most, and frankly, what really disappointed me the most, and Director Evanson, um, touched on this, was the lack of presence. If you can't show up in person, um, to the interviews, and if you have no one come to the community meetings, um, I'm sorry, as a board member, I took my Saturday, which my time is probably my most valuable asset, away from my family, and if I can come down here to the board room and sit here on a Saturday to listen to community members, which I am very happy to do, but if not one community member wants to come down here and advocate for the charter, and then if the charter school themselves cannot show up here in person, which I will give Somerset, um, kudos that they came here from Florida, somebody came from Vegas, I mean, I don't know where y'all came from, but I will give Somerset kudos that they came from all over. But I am highly disappointed that Gateway for Success did not have one person physically in the room. And I'm sorry, as a board, to tell me that you then value coming into our community when you don't even value showing up to the interview, and then you have no one coming to the public meeting to advocate for your school, I'm sorry, I, it's really hard for me to take that seriously. So, um, that may sound a little bit harsh, but it, it's just hard for me to buy that you really want to be in our community and that you want to be a part of our community if you can't even be here, um, in person. And I don't think we need to tell you that you have to be here in person. I just, you're an adult, and I think you should figure that out, and you should know that yourself. So, um, beyond the gaps in planning and presence, um, again, there was a question of purpose. Gateway's proposed model largely duplicates what we already are doing in this very room, in this very school that we're sitting in right now, um, which we're doing successfully at R5. Um, we already have a high-performing state-rated alternative program serving this population. Again, I feel there was sort of a lack of, um, maybe even research of what we're, what we already do in District 51. And so for me, I felt it was a duplication of what we're already doing, um, in the program of R5. And so for me, I just, um, I, I don't see the value in duplicating something that we're already doing in District 51. So it's, again, it's not bringing something unique or different than what we're already doing, um, in our district. So for me, um, it's a no. So, again, so we can go ahead and... Board, does, did anybody else share anything else? Okay. All right, we can take the vote.
Mr. Chavez?
Approved.
Mr.? Mrs. Evanson?
Send no.
No, it's, we're, we're...
Approving...
We're approving the motion tonight. I know, it's a little, it's a, it's a, yeah.
Yeah, I, I...
It's, it's confusing. There you go. Yes, I approve the resolution.
Mrs. Heitz?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Lima?
Yes.
All right, next up is open board discussion. Board, did you have anything else that you wanted to share before the end of the meeting?
The only thing I, I just like, once again, thank Jen and her team for putting everything together and giving us all that information. I really appreciate all the work that they did, so thank you so very much.
Yeah, you know, uh, Director Chavez, that's a great point. I mean, everybody, Somerset, um, you know, coming and doing your work, I, it's no small task to put a charter together, I've been a part of one. Jen, Dak, um, Clint, you know, um, yeah, the whole team, even, um, the, the gal from the Charter Authorization District. I mean, I, you guys brought a really good team in to do all of it, so I'm very thankful to everybody, so thank you, Director Chavez, that's a great point. So, um, these are hard, um, decisions sometimes, and, um, but, you know, just, we have to look at them kind of from this big level, and, um, anyways, it's just, I agree. But thank you to everybody for the work that was done on, on all levels, on both sides. Thank you. Anything else?
I know we have a executive session next week, but this is our last public meeting, so just thanks to the board, because I know it was a volunteer job, and y'all get the month of July off, so congratulations, um, that's your bonus. Um, but, uh, hopefully y'all get some rest, because it's a challenging position for y'all as well, so, um, and we'll be back in August.
Yes, um, the executive session next week, just so everybody knows, is the board has to do Dr. Hill's evaluation, um, and so you go into executive session, obviously, to discuss personnel items, and so the board will be reviewing exec, um, that during executive session, just so that everybody's aware.
Can't be here with pneumonia, I don't know about that.
I know. All right, do you have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, thank you, everyone, have a good evening.